State Board of Education, need your order. We have the agenda to approve, or the agenda is approved, we have amendments to the agenda. SBRC update up to 9:40 following the consent agenda to rule. Is there a second to end agenda? Second, second by Georgia. Any discussions? On favor to get my say hi?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Agenda is approved. Communication for public comment. It's the state board's agenda is full and I may place limits on the public comment based on the number of members of the public who intend to speak. I give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. Your time is a lot and I will ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on the future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at the today's meeting. Do we have public comment?
Good morning. If there's anybody who is online and would like to make public comment, please use the raise hand feature in the webinar window at the bottom. I have Susan Brandt, who would like to address the board. Susan, you'll need to unmute, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sue Brandt. I'm a teacher and I'm a parent of a child with dyslexia and I'm a board member of Decoding Dyslexia Iowa. And I'm here today to give you a clearer picture of what it's like for Iowa educators and families who are trying to help their children. It's very personal for me. My dyslexia journey began with my son, who was diagnosed severe profound dyslexia. And in our school, AGWSR, a small school district, we had to get testing from a private outside source in Des Moines. We had to tutor to get him to be able to overcome the problems with his reading. And it was very expensive and he had to tutor for six to seven years outside of school because we just could not, they couldn't meet his needs in our school district. So it's been very, it's been a very long journey. He's going to be a senior in high school next year. And so we're very proud of him and it's just been a very difficult time for him through all of school and a struggle for him. And you know, as a teacher, I see many, many other students that their parents go through the same things that we did with our son. We were just fortunate that we were able to pay for the tutoring and a lot of families don't have the finances to do that. I also want to address some of the discussion that has occurred at the last board meeting. It is tempting to think that Decoding Dyslexia Iowa exists because it's a small number of children that are falling through the cracks. It's easy to think that the needs of most children with dyslexia are met and Decoding Dyslexia Iowa only hears the worst case scenarios, but this, nothing could be farther from the truth. Decoding Dyslexia Iowa was founded in 2013 and in the past nine years, we have worked with hundreds of families and we have never met one who has been able to get their dyslexic child's needs met within their school system. Not a single one. And we've looked, really think about that. Not getting identified and not getting the help is absolutely the norm. It's not the exception. The data backs this up. In 2019, Iowa Dyslexia Task Force conducted a survey to find out how widespread the problems with dyslexia are. At your last meeting, Katie Grieving shared some of those survey findings and I'm going to share some of them with you again today in case you're tempted to think that dyslexia is an isolated problem and that it affects just a handful of Iowans. Half of all the educators surveyed could not answer basic questions about dyslexia correctly. Only 12% said they learned anything about dyslexia in their teacher training. And this is true with my education that I had at the University of Northern Iowa. 65% of the parents who had a child with dyslexia said they were paying for outside services for their child and many stated that they wanted, but they couldn't afford it. Which is exactly what happened with my family. I want to thank you for listening today and I hope you're going to continue to make the issue of dyslexia and literacy a priority until our children, their parents and their teachers get the education and the support they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I do not have any other public comment.
All right. Move on. Next on my agenda is communication with the director.
So a couple of topics I want to address today and there will be some more information coming. One, we talked a little bit about the department has been hiring some staff. We had some positions we hadn't filled while having the normal things when we were out. And so we're actively ramping up a lot of those positions and we're very excited to have Kim Baranek joining us July 1st as our new division administrator and she will be coming to CC where she's been associate superintendent. So the timing of her being able to come and meet you unless she'd be starting didn't really match, but we're thrilled to have her. So we'll be seeing her name and probably communication from her going forward. The other topic that I'll just provide kind of an overview on, and I would expect there to be some information going forward, is there's some questions in light of recent events around school safety and what's required in Iowa. On our website, there is information on the resources we currently have and what's currently required. So in 2018, there was a requirement for all schools to have these emergency plans and emergencies are a broad spectrum of events. Everything from a pandemic to an active shooter to a fire. And so schools have these plans and then required to submit assurances to the department annually and to have some sort of drill. There's quite enough information that's available to schools, but what I think you're going to see going forward, what you will see going forward is we're having some sort of inter-agency conversations on different options going forward in light of recent events. And just shifting from, you know, the conditions we have been responding to over the last couple of years to what we are continuing to be responding to going forward, we have to reset some of our awareness and understandings in our schools. John, I don't know if you remember when we did, were you part of those Alice trainings that were several years ago, there was grant opportunities for school districts with partnerships with law enforcement to go through a training called Alice, which is alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. And there were some, I remember I received, I was certified instructor of the training and I went through that process and there was money available, but it really helped us rethink how we respond to situations because it's not how we think we're supposed to. And so just that revisiting that conversation, revisiting resources, allowing our educators to have those partnerships again with schools and law enforcement and just accommodate and understanding how we ensure we keep ourselves safe and how we think differently about how we respond. Did you, did you do any of that training?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Training with drills.
Yes, very eye opening. So you're going to see some more information coming from that and how we can, as agencies, better connect and provide some resources for schools. So we'll make sure we share that with you as well when that comes out. We're really just making sure people kind of know what's available now and that we are actively engaging in the conversation.
Do school districts ask you for help in that process? Once they send a review to us, we actually review, I mean, we actually sit down and say, all right, this could be better?
So what is required when this was first passed in 2018 as a plan and now they just send us assurances, but if they, so they don't submit a plan that we review, but we have staff that are available to help and have support and answer questions. And so what we'd like to see kind of going forward now is kind of a revisiting those conversations and how we can make sure all schools are sort of current in that thinking. Because again, you know, one thing I remember learning from that training was the doors. And so how you secure yourself for an active shooter, what's required in fire code, conflict. And so, and then you think about how we thought differently about now with a pandemic, how do you balance all those needs with a physical structure that can't be quickly adapted? So we'll have some more conversations coming up too. Yes, we will be.
And there are resources at the county level as well. Which, which is an industry, right?
Yes.
They've been very helpful in the prior.
Yeah, seeing it actually go out, not today, something that I'm looking at, building to see how secure, I mean, see what actually like this place, say like, okay, something started to happen and then do guys, just plan to action.
Homeland Security has available threat assessments. I think that's the right phrase. Don't quote me on that. Vulnerability assessments, that's the right word, I think, that they for, I don't know how many years have held available for schools. I'm not sure the current status on that, but I think that's another piece of this we're talking about. Some of that was when we did Alice training, that was part of that too. So there's different pathways. This isn't a new conversation for schools, but it's a conversation we just need to revisit and remind people what is available and what do we need to make more available.
And also as a parent, I mean, I'm seeing my kind of friends, I mean, it's on my mind, right? So it's like as a parent, then are there any, I mean, like I go to my school and be like, well, I need to see these things and you know, that's what the American do or ask for.
So one thing, and I'll defer to Homeland Security and law enforcement on this a little bit, but one thing about the plans is you have to be a little bit careful about how they're shared because you don't want to share with potential intruder what your plans are. And so I would just visit with your school district on, you know, what conversation you want to have so you feel comfortable, what policies they have in place, but there is a fine line there when we be public.
I was just going to echo that. There's some private base portions of those plans that are exempt from open media, open records laws for obvious reasons.
I think there's another component here and I'm not quite sure how to work it together like this, but there's one thing about having the plans in place that protect the students, but I think there's also another, that there's a component here of mental health and making sure that the students actually feel safe. So having the plans is one thing, but then how are we making sure that the students actually feel safe while they're in the spaces too? And just the component, thinking about the national landscape and the media coverage and just what is on the minds of the students and what they're feeling when they're in those spaces and just kind of the lingering after effects of what they're feeling and seeing and how it's impacting them even in their own spaces.
I assume, do they do active shooter training at the schools with students? Some do, some don't, but that's kind of a local position. There are some conflicting philosophies on that, but they can, to your point, part of those inter-agency conversations we're having is this continuum of the things we look at is that part. It's the, you know, before we did here, what are we doing over there? We have to make sure we have these resources once here because we have to be prepared. But there's a whole conversation of how we address it up there and that is part of this conversation, whether it's with the health supports, some of the resources we have and we're talking about also that will be part of this kind of rollout of options. How do we just better serve that continuum? Yes.
You may not want to go on with this conversation. It's okay. Are dollars available or how does this work? If I want to, if I feel I need to be a security officer, there a levy, an administrative levy is some kind that I can?
And then there's not a separate levy, but there's, there's.
There's levy.
Which is funding.
So school district could do that, you said the South Republic, this is important. Yeah, yeah.
And some new legislation that has happened, it will allow for some sharing of dollars and agreements between schools and local law enforcement for, whether it's an SRO or some sort of partnership so that they can utilize them a little bit differently. Yes.
Does the department have any unallocated dollars remaining that it could make available to places that are, that need assistance?
That's part of the conversation we're having, some options we're going to make available so we'll give you, once that's finalized, we'll let you all know. But yes, that's part of the conversation.
Going back with the shooter drills, there's really days far as home, there's crazy levels of shooters far back. Little ones, huge ones, to the, you know, make kids feel safe.
Yeah, but then how do you make it feel safe? If you never communicate, I'm sure you can't do something, but not to an active shooter.
It might be physical, right? Like you physically go through the drill. Like, did you do the drill?
Yeah.
You did the drill.
Well, we do drills in most every school I know. We'll do the drill, but how's it happen? Shooter, or just.
Oh, right. Sorry, I meant scenario. So we did, one of the things was an actual scenario, like there was a shooter and that's there's some question on what you do. And then as you go down, how do you start with a conversation here? Like the traditional model, when this was first designed on how you respond in these situations was based on drive-by shootings in Los Angeles, because it was windows and a wall, so they taught everybody to be quiet and duck. Well, that's not the scenario of an active shooter going into the building, so that's not the correct response. So this whole idea of you throw a thing, you make noise, you disrupt the movement, the movement was the training on observe, orient, decide, act. As an individual, you should learn how to disrupt that so you're not just sitting quietly making it easier for the shooter. I think it was the Virginia Tech one, you know, practice shooting plates on the ground. He went to the shooting range, put paper plates on the ground, practiced walking and shooting them because he knew people were going to hide under their desks and duck and be quiet because that's what they were trained to do. That's not the right response. So that's a whole, going way down a rabbit hole of training, but those are the conversations that people need to have to learn two things differently about how you respond, which isn't the traditional model that we might have thought it used to be.
There's tons and tons and tons of resources to safety. You could spend all your waking hours going.
Yes. So just for your all awareness, we are very actively involved in some conversations and doing some different things going forward to make sure we keep you aware of.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you for that report. We have the consent agenda to approve. I move approval.
Second.
Moving second to approve the consent agenda. On favor, let me get my say on.
Hi.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We have the SBRC.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Cassandra Klein. I'm the SBRC liaison and the bureau chief for the Bureau of School Business Operations. When the SBRC holds hearings, the SBRC is the school budget review committee, as they hold hearings, presents to board a summary of action that occurred in those hearings. The committee met on May 3rd to hold a special hearing in response to requests from the field for two separate reasons. So one, they granted an emergency hearing for a district that is entering into a reorganization effective July 1, 2023. The SBRC has authority to grant use of the unexpendited fund balance if they wanted them demolish a building or repurpose the building within three years of an organization, a reorganization. So there is Southeast Webster Grant has a building in Boxville and they are looking to demolish part of that and there are conversations with the city to actually sell part of that. So they wanted to complete the project this summer. So as soon as the vote was passed in March, he reached out right away and said, can we come to the SBRC? And of course, the next SBRC hearing at that time was just a couple of weeks away and so that, that wasn't peaceful. But the SBRC did grant to hold a special hearing to hear the request and that request was granted. The other nine requests that came before the SBRC were related to additional MSAs, modified supplemental amount of spending authority, related to additional employee retention payments beyond those that were provided by the governor. And those were requested by nine different districts. Do you guys have any questions about that information?
Were those requests approved?
They were all approved. So there was much deliberation, I would say, on the first one. As the committee talked about potential precedents, as they talked about the types of requests, as they talked about the impact to the field, as they talked about what that would look like for taxpayers, what that would look like for staff, what that looks like when we're already short-staffed in a lot of areas for districts and other things that may be done. It was a lot of deliberation. And so each of those, they did not pass unanimously. They were voted four to one. I think so for a couple of reasons. So number one, those that were allowed to come to this special hearing on May 3rd, it was only those that were paying out the retention payments in FY22 and if they wanted that modified supplemental amount to affect the year the cops weren't heard. However, a lot of districts, what I'm hearing is that they're actually waiting until the start of the school year to provide additional retention payments. And so those requests then would be possibly coming in future years. What I will say though, is that the requests are limited based on the funding source that was used. And for the districts that did come, they had to provide a number of, they had to go through kind of an analysis of, what are your categorical balances, especially those that could be used for this purpose and those that could be transferred specifically to the flexibility account that are also allowed to be used for any general fund purpose? What are your SRO balances? If you have any pandemic funds left, if you have balances, what are your plans for using those? And so I think a lot of districts are also using other existing revenue sources and so they don't have a need to come to the SBRC for this purpose. So what that impact looks like, we won't know for additional requests, but I do anticipate just based on conversations I've had with districts, I anticipate some.
Is there a general common denominator with all these requests? I mean, who specifically are we giving these bonuses to? Is there, is this making up the loans to them get one or is this trying to retain someone and we can keep?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it starts with the teachers that received the retention, the governor's retention payment. It was anyone beyond that. So for some districts, it was just the additional teachers that didn't, that weren't eligible for that bonus. And then all the way to the other end of the spectrum where all other employees in the district received the payment. So the amounts that were requested were the same, the thousand dollars as what was provided by the governor's office. The assurances, some of them were, a number of them were the same, were at least the same and then maybe additional. So the assurances were that they complete their contract through FY22. And so in this case, some of them added on, they must have been employed by, whether it was the same date as, as our assurances or a different date and/or some of them had to sign a 23 contract. So there, there was a little bit of variance between what they required and who received the payments.
But not everyone necessarily got this thousand dollars in these districts.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
You have other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the legislative update.
Late last night, I thought I can't always be good, so sorry it didn't come to an advance, but I'll go very quickly and I don't have time to answer any questions. So we made it to the end of session. Things wrapped up late May, May 24th-ish, if I remember right, it was a little fuzzy because it was shortly after midnight. So that was after two marathon days where they covered quite a bit of ground, including all appropriations bills and any last minute policy bills that, that they wanted to pass during session. So what I passed around this handout is, I got extra copies of the handout if you need to soak it up somewhere. What I, what I'm passing around is, these are the old bills. So these would be the bills that ultimately made it through session, passed both chambers, are not eligible for the governor to sign. Of course, these are the ones that we are tracking. There's many more bills that made it through, but these are the ones that we're monitoring. For right now, I'll just cover a couple of the highlights, starting with House File 2080. So this kind of gets back to the conversation we just had about school safety. House File 2080 modifies or adds to shared operational functions between school districts. So currently there's multiple positions a school district can share and generate extra dollars to support that sharing. One of the new additions through House File 2080 would be school resource officer. They define school resource officer as that is defined in federal statute. So.
And then you raise the, you know, what schools can actually.
The total cap, it's still stuck, it's still stuck there.
So it can't still.
Yeah, so to its point, there is a limit of 21 pupils or that they can share, each school district can share. So school resource officer, I believe, is weighting of, it's going to be four, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but it, so that counts towards the 21 total. The other thing this bill did was increase the weighting for shared superintendence to, from eight to nine. And this is partly in response to last session when they dropped the weightings for any, any position that was generating a rating of three, they dropped it to two, four to three. And so this is somewhat in response to feedback they received from the field about the impact on their overall finances. So they folded up the weighting for shared superintendent. The difference between this increase and last year's decrease is this last year's increases are temporary. They'll go back a year or two from now, the shared superintendent weighting increase was a permanent change, at least as it's written in statute, they can always change that later. So, so that's House File 2080. Another important one, House File 2081, this relates to the teacher preparation and the program assessments that were required and eliminates that requirement. This is something that they, it was a hot topic all session. It got folded in at one point to Senate's version of the governor's bill, but that showed before end of session, they took that part out, they advanced that as a stand-by bill and they did pass that as a stand-by bill. So once it is signed, there will be no more requirement for that in program assessment for our teacher preparation programs. Draw your attention to House File 2575, that's the education appropriations bill that provides funding for several departments, including the Department of Education. The final version was substantially modified from the version that passed the House and that it contains far fewer policy provisions than what was included in the House version. So really at the end of the day, the major changes, policy changes that were included in the education appropriation bill related to the therapeutic classroom incentive fund grant application process and how we are to prioritize those applications at the department. There's also changes to provisions related to charter school funding, which we were working with the governor's office on making changes after, after conversations with the charter schools that were approved this year to make sure that they had sustainable funding, particularly early on, that that issue was, was brought to our attention. Otherwise, from the department's perspective, it's largely a status quo budget, a few modifications, status quo FTE, fully funded the skilled worker and job creation fund program for the community colleges, those would be the workforce training, development fund, PACE, GAAP, those programs that are very important to our, our community colleges, meaning youth college, also to us, it's a point five million dollar increase this year, which are the larger increases and a couple of other increases in that bill as well. Any questions on those first couple of topics before I move on? Keep trucking. On the second page, House File 2589, this would be the standing appropriations bill. You might have heard of this one because usually the standing approach is one of the last items that they take up in session. And so shortly before adjournment, they introduced amendments to standing appropriations bill and two significant additions to the standing approach were policy provisions, one impacting open enrollment, which in short eliminated the open enrollment deadline. And the other addition were related to the college and career transition counselor. It added that position to the list of allowable shared functions that districts can receive rating for. So I believe the college and career transition counselors concept was brought to your attention before. Basically, it's a role that allows districts and community colleges partner and it assists junior seniors mostly with, you know, developing career plans and getting ready for entering college, but it also provides transition services to those students after their senior year as well. So that was listed as a breakout shared function that is all separate from counselors. But that open enrollment vision kind of was last minute, item that we had to grapple to, looking at releasing guidance on that, should the bill be signed and that provision be included there as well. Set about 2367, this is just a general tax bill of note here. The original. Um of note here, um the original appropriations bill talked about the teacher retention bonuses and included a provision in there which would allow. Uh which made those bonuses tax exempt. That was actually removed from the education appropriations bill, but it was picked up and put in this general tax bill. So that part was in there, the part that was lost was the language around school districts using none of your balances to fund additional staff bonuses. So that part did not make it, but the tax provisions did end up in Senate About twenty three sixty seven. And then lastly, uh Senate About twenty three eighty three uh was also passed. Um the part of this bill that we're interested in is Division Two, which relates to uh work-based learning and the individual project planning process. Um modifies I C A P slightly by integrating work-based learning and F A S F O P. Uh components into that process, so it prompts school districts to make sure students know which work-based learning experiences are available to students. And then also uh uh now requires that they work with students to understand what the F A S F O P is about, make sure they're prepared to complete the F A S F O P. It's not a mandate, then it also districts sit down to make sure that students complete it, but. It's the, it gets them in a position where they have to have those conversations and help students to complete the F A S F O P. It also gives the department more authority to collect data on work-based learning, so we have a better idea of what experiences and opportunities are available to students. Um quickly, um something that's worth noting, some of the major bills that did not make it through this session. And some of these won't come as a surprise at this point since we're. Uh you know, several weeks past the end of session, but the big one would be related to the governor's education proposals. Um uh at the end of the day, Senate About twenty three sixty nine, that was the version of the governor's bill that was most closely to us originally introduced. Um that would have included the scholarship provisions um uh as well as the transparency proposals related to um. Uh posting information on school curriculums, library resources, that sort of thing. Uh there was some uh provisions in there related to social studies, civics, civics instruction. But the Senate version did have some substantial amendments. The big thing that they did was they took a lot of bills that passed the House and they folded them in to the Senate version. Um you know, um uh you know, for for several reasons, but some of the big bills would have been. Senator Sinclair introduced a parental student bill of rights, that was ultimately folded into the governor's uh bill in the in the Senate. House File twenty eighty one, the ed prep bill that was folded in at one point. House File twenty five sixty seven, this was a bill that was introduced by Representative Height. Related to uh reporting and investigating contact with professionals, that was folded in there. Provisions related to master teacher licenses, all that folded in there, so the bill blew in quite a bit in the Senate. Um when the negotiations failed to proceed uh between Senate, House, the governor's office. Only one of those bills actually ended up coming out, it being advanced as a standalone bill, that'd be the House File twenty uh eighty one, which was that prep bill. To all those other bills which had quite a bit of momentum behind them at one point. They they didn't make it out of this session um after they were uh amended to the governor's bill. So that was kind of surprising given the tension that was uh you know, kind of around those bills at one point. Um some of the other bills that kind of made a stir, Senate About twenty three sixty four, that was introduced by Senator Chapman, and that was related that. Touchdown, you know, obscene materials and the penalties for um practitioners uh who were um alleged to have distributed those materials to minors. There's even some minor bills that we were expecting to see advance uh related to like the computer science incentive fund, which would have extended the timeframe, which they could use those grants. Volunteer substitute teachers, um there was a I A S B bill that had quite a bit of momentum. But um none of those ultimately made it through, so what you got here that I handed out is really what at the end of the day we're looking at, which. Um um it's kind of pared down from what I would have anticipated being the final list of bills that we would be uh going through right now at this point in session. So with that, are there any questions that we can attempt to address? I did that good, no way I did that good.
Just an observation about the open enrollment bill. It relates to your jurisdiction to your open enrollment appeals, and if the bill is signed, you will have that. So all of the good cause uh enrollment appeals will no longer be listed anymore because. Because it's no longer necessary because there are no longer deadlines. And so uh that substantially will change your workload at certain meetings because. You will no longer have any jurisdiction in your own fields. Your workload will change, my workload will change um. But I just thought that would be the other one since it directly relates to the way that this board would be doing its business.
So there won't be any debt? We won't have any deadline ones, but would there be any substantive? None at all?
So the recei- excuse me, the receiving district doesn't have to take the student. It's still the Senate, right? Okay.
The receiving due, the receiving students, the receiving districts in the fly uh classroom space, you know, fly. It's sort of a normal criteria that would for a time of five. That there's just no more deadlines.
Okay, and the sending district. Can 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 they say no? Okay.
Unless we have any uh court approved desegregation.
Uh thank you.
And Eric maybe said this at the beginning, what will happen then, as things are signed, um our role is to send that communication to the field. So there will be a a letter to the field and. We have another that also clarifies, you know, the different provisions and what it means for you as the district. Uh there will be rules that will have to be written for some of them also, so some of the timing on that will have to work through, but you will be copied and uploaded.
Yeah, so the key there is this thing. Sign column, notice that it's mostly empty, uh we're still waiting on the governor's signature. Uh and she has until June twenty fourth to sign bills at this point, so um. We watch to turn low, and she can, you know, eat dough or find out, tell various provisions, so just because they look this way now, just.
If school districts still share, that seems like. That's something.
School district sharing kind of counselors.
Yeah, so we can still share that. That's a.
Yep.
Yeah.
Very common one.
Tom- Thomas, do you have a second? If did, what what if it's an appeal, we heard this past twelve months? And somebody just. On open enrollment, can they just now enroll? Let's say we denied an appeal.
The bill, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, it will be effective upon action, so because they wait for you.
After July one. Or uh or whatever it's. So, all right, thank you.
Uh there's not so much to be here for me. There's some comments from the field about funding, how that's gonna work as far as the students. Open roles in here or whatever. I'm saying funding.
And that's what we'll have to communicate out, so if it's once and if it's signed. Then it's that's the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, yours. All right. Our Teacher of the Year. In the House.
Wow, really?
So where do I? Hey, the table.
Maybe there are some new people in the room, so I thought I might talk a little bit about.
Right, sure.
No, thank you. Uh Teacher of the Year Program. My name is Mary Ann Robinson, I'm a consultant with the Department of Education and School Improvement. And I'm also the state coordinator for the Teacher of the Year Program right now. Um the Teacher of the Year Program was actually implemented in nineteen fifty eight by the state legislature, and they support it now currently. Um by providing an appropriation to support the teacher on the board for the future. So there is a. Quite a significant application and review process, people, Department of Education, statewide as well. Um go through and review applications, people that are interested in the position. We are looking to select someone that has experience of. Motivating and supporting and challenging students. We are looking for someone that's respected by our colleagues and by students too. Um and someone that has uh taken steps to help us redefine what education is. They work with the Department of Education, we help create programming and opportunities for them. They have a particular passion and um a platform that they go out and speak and disseminate their information as well. And they work on different stated initiatives, whatever seems to connect to their uh their particular professional expectations. And um George Anderson. Um is the, actually the twenty twenty Teacher of the Year. And he was so good at it that we kept him around. There were some other things going on at that time too, but um that's how he ended up getting to stick around for two years. So I know he has spoken to many of you before and talked about his year. Um I I'm honored to introduce George today, he's become a friend. He has quite a colorful past, we need to ask him questions about that. Um and as the uh husband of a beautiful uh professional woman and the father of two children, he has a very appropriate present life. And I think he has a uh a future with great potential. I'm honored to introduce you to George Anderson, a high school social studies teacher in Cedar Rapids.
That's what I was just getting ready to ask. Yep. So uh the the piece of the paper I hand around is just a one pager, I'm used to walking when I talk, so if I move around a lot, so I apologize for trying to include everybody. Um and so to to understand reading of this, uh you understand I was in Marine or Four Years, it's still a large part of my identity. Uh I have actually told numerous people that if I were not where I'm at in my life, with my family, my wife, the things that I've gotten done. Uh to do rather, I would feel like maybe I made the wrong choice getting out. So I'm still a member of the Marine Corps League and it really colors everything I did. So when you, when you read this, understand this is coming from somebody who is reading it in a military cadence, who has just executed his fifth general order, which is to quit my post, only when properly leave the duty. Which I am, all right, so. I stay relieved of my post as Iowa Teacher of the Year after twenty six months of duty. I've had the opportunity to serve my state in a broad range of operational capacities. I've had the pleasure of sharing my message, building classroom culture and relationships through equity and protecting one's passionate mindsets and self-care. I return to my original appointed place of duty at J F K in the fall, ready to share what I've learned with colleagues and students in my district and community. So uh Mary had a thought that maybe I should put that out there, when people read like tour of duty and things like this, they might be like, say, you know, I just read like this guy's fucking video games. You know how I relate to the kids. Um so anyhow, uh I'll be going from the PowerPoint, there's a lot of pictures and stories. And so um my twenty to twenty twenty two years, I've taken, kind of calling myself the Iowa Teacher of the Years. Uh and that is a large, it is a result of COVID totally. Um so what a long strange trip it's been, and if you start hearing the Casey or Truckin' song by Grateful Dead, that was kind of the intent. Um it's been a long time, so this is me in twenty nineteen and my first time ever with people from Devoin coming to take pictures and let me know that this was it. I just looked at this and I go, man, look at all that hair. Still hardly any gray there. Um and this is the actual awarding in December, and that's why is one of the things, I've had two directors of education, I've had three, maybe four handlers for the Teacher of the Year Program. So transition has been a big part of everyone's experience for the last two years, and this program no less. This was me getting ready to head out to California, uh twenty twenty, my first time doing anything as Teacher of the Year. Um pretty excited for the position at this point in time. Isbelia, the uh first person I met who's the handler for this position, introducing me to um some of y'all in twenty twenty. And then twenty twenty. That's me on a Zoom, and I could be teaching one of the three classes I taught at that time, so I stayed in the classroom, or any number of events we did, and a lot of everything was on Zoom, right? It was a um either whether I was doing graduations or workshops with A E As or speaking in the classrooms, or even some one-on-one counseling ads, local teachers reach out for things. Uh so that that's a picture of me from Zoom. Now, this was uh last fall, where I actually got to meet Director Lebo in person for the first time, we had worked on task force uh and other things for every year, but I never actually met her in person. So when we selected Sarah Russell to the twenty twenty teach of the year, I got a chance to meet Director Lebo for the first time. And then this this next few pictures are kind of like the story of the second year, there's a lot more in person, a lot being out in the state, doing the things that teachers do here traditionally have done in terms of school visits. And this was, I believe this was Perry, and this young man was wondering why I didn't know anything about coding. And uh I was just going, uh will you push this button here? Um and that's probably his, geez, this guy is not bright, look. This is when we select Sarah Russell, and Governor Reynolds came out again, the hair changes, it's noticeable. And this was uh just a sample of speaking at um Simpson College uh in person. And then finally selecting Sarah Russell, uh and that's Jane Schmidt, two thousand fourteen, and so. Uh that's kind of a a quick tour de force overview, and then I'll get into some of the specifics of what happened in that time period, with a focus on twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. So uh got to go to Space Camp, which was pretty amazing uh and and awesome, and what was really cool is. Uh part of me was thinking this is gonna be a big space camp, a lot of fun and games, but it actually turned into pretty intense professional developments. Uh and and what NASA was really trying to promote with teachers was this idea of. Ironically, people are not trying to be astronauts. They're having shortages in in space technologies and things like that, and they believe that some of it is it's so exclusive to math science focus, and they're like, we need artists, we need historians, we need journalists, everybody. And so they had guest speakers, one, uh the John, I can't remember his name right now, and I practiced it to remember for this, but the gentleman who wrote Rocket Boys. Um and the movie that became October Sky, I believe it was, uh he came in to talk, he was a journalist, reporter in Language Arts, and all you want to do is work for NASA. This was a way for him to kind of do that, and now he works with NASA writing publications and things like that. Uh they had some artists come and talk to us about design and things like that and things they've used, and they're really pushing hard to get more women involved too. So they were like, when you go back to your schools, really let let everybody know, there's a place for NASA, there's a place for everybody on this team. Uh and this was my squad right here, and we got to do some fun stuff, this was the moonwalk. Uh which is a little harder than I actually thought it was, and that's that's why there's laughter in the background, I took the most favorable shot possible. This this thing was interesting, they told you keep your eyes open to it, you won't experience vertigo the same way. And I did that, and and you don't, but it doesn't make sense, I felt like Spider-Man in that thing, it was pretty intense. Um.
Did you get vertigo?
I did not, I did not, which is weird because I practiced jiu-jitsu and just warming up, rolling around, I get vertigo after two, like I have stopped. You know, um but no, that didn't bother me for some reason, and I don't like roller coasters either. Um the next few pictures are one of the bigger things we did for these uh simulations, scenarios and simulations. And I was the mission commander for our Mars extraction mission, and the idea is, it's this huge room with all these devices and equipment, and they put uh. The element of the team I was commanding was on Mars, as our simulation and resource gathering experiments, these things, we had to collect all these resources and then get off on this time hack. Uh and then dock outside of the atmosphere of Mars and then re-enter Earth's atmosphere, and I was the mission commander for this one. And it was pretty intense and uh. Long story short, we're coming down to the wire on getting these resources. If you miss the resource pickup on Mars, the rest of the mission kind of goes south, and I knew that, so. Me thinking in Marine style, I kicked my entire team into the extraction cube so they can get out and get safe, and I'm like doing everything I can to get all the resources, and I'm like, hey. You're in command, Torres, if I don't get off this thing, take charge and carry out the mission, right? And so I was like, I'm gonna die, and you know, I know it's a simulation, but I, we get it done, and I like dive through the door and it slams just as they yell time, and it was like nec time stuff. And uh what they do in these things is they they have anomalies, random anomalies that pop up, and you have to address them and go through the protocols and re-insert. And our biggest anomaly was you have totally lost com with mission control while out in space. Figure it out. And so what I did, and they're still recording everything, and so I'm just calming everybody down, so we've purged this, we planned this, we know the mission, we know the time, our goal is to stay on our time hack. And we did that, and a few other things popped up. And this is the end, this was a successful mission, we re-entered Earth's atmosphere, we collected all our resources. And this gentleman up here, Antoine, he's the Department of Defense Teacher of the Year. He's actually been here before and he knew a lot of the folks down there, and so he, it's it's not official because they don't keep like postings. But he told me that the evaluator said that was the second highest scoring mission they had ever had and the highest scoring they'd had in a long time. Um so I was kind of like. Um and then this was just, uh this is my squad, these are the folks I got to meet. One of the cool things about this Teacher of the Year Program is you will find a community of educators and friends in every state, and and that that pays dividends in terms of networking and meeting people and new ideas. Uh and then just friendship, and so uh I never really thought much about it, my wife actually pointed out, she goes, don't you think it's odd you got Missouri, Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, Louisiana there? And so I never really thought much about it. My wife actually pointed out, she goes, don't you think it's odd? You got Missouri, Florida, Georgia, South Carolina and Louisiana there? And I was like, wow, those are all the states I live in if I didn't love Iowa. So those are my main, my main crew there. We got a Washington DC trip in this year. That was a, this was a real touch and go. They told us to keep September, keep October open. They would give us confirmation by September 27th. Just hold tight. And then like October 1st came along and they're like, okay, now we're going. And we didn't know it was going to happen, but it was very cool. And I'm glad we got there. We got there. And we got there. Our first opening is with Sarah Brown Wesley, Iowa's own, 2010 National Teacher of the Year. Now she works for CCSO directly and pretty impactful individual right there. And what she was telling us was that we're going to the White House tomorrow. And nobody knew this, but the COVID protocols, we weren't sure if they were going to let us in. Secret Service was very concerned about this many people coming into the White House and things like that. So we were pretty excited about it. We got our White House tour. It's just a picture of Abraham Lincoln saying spear. And then this was something that I've always wanted to do ironically enough. I've always wanted to hear the Marine Corps Band play on the South Lawn lights. I always thought that would be very cool. And so there's all these high profile people everywhere, we're snapping shots. And I'm over here with the band going, hit it boys. And so this is us on the South Lawn. And they combined the 2020, 2021 Teacher of the Year cohorts for this. And again, we didn't know, we knew Dr. Joe Biden was going to speak to us, but then out of the blue, the Chiefs started playing and President Biden comes running out. And so afterwards, and he really went off script with his schedule here and his handlers and the Secret Service people were getting agitated because he wouldn't leave. He kept talking to us. He kept talking to the teachers. It was very cool. This picture almost got me decapitated though. I was trying to take a picture like this and I was trying to get a good angle. And all of a sudden I feel these just like steel hands. And I stopped and I looked and it's two Secret Service cats. And what I was about to do was walk over Dr. Joe Biden. And so he was like, you're not supposed to be around. I was like, alright, Roger that. One of the cool things there was Hades Town. This was just the JFK Theater Center. So like some of the things you're going to do on this are fun. This is one of the perks they gave us. And this, me and my wife figured we'd never get a chance to do something like this. So that, and this was a Capitol Hill date where we got to go and meet legislators, business legislators. And apparently Senator Grassley has a long-held reputation of being, meeting every Iowa when it comes to DC and requests session. And this was me waiting outside to get into the Senate Building. There's a lot of security and that's Officer Terry McLaughlin. He gave me a challenge point. We ended up talking for about 45 minutes and he was on his way out retiring. And he was just, we had a real heavy conversation about an awful lot of defense, his perspective being an officer. And then January 6th, and he's like, what it's like to be on duty when you hear the call. Cat portal's been breached. So real cool gentleman, definitely one of the cooler people I met this term. And there's me with Senator Grassley. And we were actually talking about a situation here where he skyped into my classroom for government class. We had him Skype in and students could talk and stuff like that. And I was just telling him about how these students, they were going hard right before he got there. But oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna ask you this. And then when they got there, like, excuse me. It's kind of, it's very interesting to see. But we had, we had some good conversations. This Secretary Miguel Cordonna. And then the gala, as he told us, it was officially pronounced the gala with, that's me and my wife. As you can see, I'm punching above my weight class. And this was just really cool. This was a lot of, a lot of people there. Humble brag here, one of the cool things about this, I got to meet South Carolina Secretary of Education, Shonda introduced me to her. And she goes, you graduated from, oh, a kind of school, soccer, T. Anytime you want a job back home, you call me, honey. It's coming. No worries. My, 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 my wife, my mom has moved to Iowa. My sister has moved to Iowa with my nieces, my father before he passed. My wife's parents moved out. My wife's middle brother's moving here next week with his kid. And two friends of hers from high school that live in Wisconsin just got jobs in the area. So we figured it out. We brought like 22 people who say to buy. There aren't any extra money for that. This was, we got to see this before I opened up the exhibit at the Smithsonian on the history of girls. And it's all about girlhood. And I'm a girl dad. I have two daughters. And so I, this was an awesome exhibit. It was very cool to see. And one of the cool things was they had in the 1800s, they're like signs for girls. And it was talking about how science wasn't considered a manly profession. So it was dominated by women earlier on until it became manly professional. And then the, the White House lawn, 2021 cohort together there, national championship game. So I'm not going to lie, we ended up doing a little more work here than I thought I was going to do. I'm a football coach. And so I, national championship game. You know, but it was a really good summit. Got to learn, one of my key takeaway from here was, um, we had a principal from Oakland talk. And one of the terms he used and one of the things he talked about was the actual space in your schools and are they aspirational environments? Do students sit in your rooms and feel like the walls talk to them? That this is a place for them to grow. And it just made me kind of revisit what should a school look like and things like that. And there were some really good breakout sessions and some things folks have done. And so that was a very cool thing. And so this educational summit was, it was like, it was really fast paced. They took good care of us, but you moved through it and you, and you went hard on it. So this is just a big poster they had for us there. This is one where you really felt like royalty, like when you showed up, we drove it. But I heard folks who flew in, when they flew in, they had like breeders there. They had this huge 2022 Teacher of the Year or whatever, and this big like red carpet treatment for them. I was like, I just rolled up in a minivan. And this is, I'm not doing anything wrong with my finger there. I had kind of sprained it in a jujitsu thing, so I couldn't fold it. Okay? But this is outside the grappling monument to Dan Gable and things of that nature. And obviously through the NCA, all the records and you're from Iowa, you acknowledged Dan Gable because he would beat up everybody in that. That's my boy DC. He actually played college football and I coached football. So we're the only two kind of football group. It was really funny because one of the game day things is you had to try to throw a football through the hole. And we both, everybody's like, DC, you're the player. And they're like, you're the coach. And so we, we were terrible actually. Best football I've ever thrown in my life, 30 yards over the top and passed. But this was just really cool being out there, college game day, obviously, getting to walk through these things. And this is us and these are our seats. And this is like the perfect seat for me because you got the dumb, the scan chart or the, the big screen there. You're far enough up that you can see everything. I personally can't stand going to games and sitting close. You can't see what's going on. And that bothers me. And I know I want to watch all of it. So this was a great seat. And then, you know, Nick Saban's right down here. I kept trying to text him in, let him know some halftime adjustments. The Kirby hat is not. But you know, the great one didn't listen. Saw how that worked. And then what might be most important for this, my wife met the Bachelorette. That was a big deal. I lost my wife for a couple hours there because she didn't want to hang out with me. She wanted to hang out with Rachel. Now, now this was the Emerging Educators Academy. If you're not aware, this was started by Jane Schmidt. We've had seven of them now. And it is four teachers by teachers. And this organization of outstanding educators in Iowa, the Iowa Outstanding Educators, the names include Flux. It's past Teachers of the Year and they put this on and it's geared towards third to fourth year college students, first and second year teachers. And so we, we, this is me photobombing Marietta's cubicle. But this is, so we do this each year. This was our first time doing it at Drake. We transferred from Simpson to Drake because we about grown Simpson in numbers. And so Drake, this was a whole lot more involved going to Drake. It was very cool though. We had the highest number in attendance this year, which we think we're going to do even better this year. And one of the reasons I have this up here is we introduced the line of social emotional learning and we partnered up with the counselors of the year. And we have three counselors of the year who verbally committed to present this year and work on presenting going forward. So that we'll open up a line focused purely on social emotional health and instruction for these teachers. And then these are just some shots of people from around. We bring the, the 2022 who sits on a panel to answer questions for new teachers, Chris Burke, our 2019. This Carrie and Jane. And so they're just all, all folks who are involved in this. And this is who the Anna Roots Bay, our 2021 National Teacher of the Year. And I just wanted to say she's been to the state three times since this thing. She came back for a Cedar Falls Professional Development, a conference at the University of Iowa for educators of color. And one of the things that she said, more than any state she's traveled to, is how Iowa Teachers of the Year are cohort and family. She's like, she was blown away almost to tears at how much we showed up for one another. We had group texts. We stayed working together. And we're looking forward to some future work. So, so that was just something that's let you guys know that you have an organization of past teachers of the year who are really tight. And according to Juliana, one of the most tight organizations in the country. I know we're on a time hack. I'll try to speed up a little bit. Sorry. And I know Marietta doesn't have pictures of her, but I did, because this is her tenure and start with me and Sarah and Sarah Brown Wesley. So around the state, Iowa's a beautiful state. I love road tripping. I love natural scenery. I got to see a lot of cool things. Got to see an eagle attacking out in the field. Beautiful scenery like this. And these are just pictures. This was, I believe, the first time I got to accompany Director Lebo. And what I took away from Atama was this welcome that they brought to the refugee populations. And Cedar Rapids has such a, is an increasingly large group of that. And I was like, going back to our district, are we doing stuff like this? They had this center campus piece where they're inviting parents in, making them a part of Atama, local festivals. It was, it was really outstanding. And so this is one of the cool things about these visits is when you see these things that you can bring home. This is just out in elementary schools, which I'll be honest, surprised me how much I really enjoyed this because I'm a high school teacher, right? I don't like my kids. But no, I loved it. And if I went so far into it, I might consider a switch. I teach philosophy too. So this was really cool because this was just kids using this idea of social contracts to develop norms. And so I brought this back to my class. It's not like elementary kids can do this. Why can't we? We're such bigots, you know? So just a couple of things they've done. This is the Iowa State Student Innovation Center. It's a new building. If you haven't had a chance to go out and check it out, it is worth a look. It's extremely innovative and bold. And we'll see how it all, the future, what it does. But the idea basically is to create a space where everybody on campus, regardless of your degree, can show up and partner and work in entrepreneurial capacities. They have some facilities that aren't available anywhere else in the Midwest. This being one of those, this glass blowing thing where they're, they're hoping the engineers, artists and business people come together, right? Everything in here is student run. The, the, the student store that's in here is all student-made product. It's all sold by students. It's all organized by students and run by students. The whole thing is big entrepreneurial experiment. Very cool. Definitely worth a visit. This is Simpson. A lot of what I got to do was speak to student teachers. And this was one of those. And what I found, this is where my, my message started including a lot of mindset stuff because there, there was a lot of concerns for them. Just future teacher, future educators. This was down in Adele, Iowa. One of the things you also get to do is, is work with first and second year teachers or go and speak to, to teachers at workshops. And this was down in Adele, Iowa. University of Dubuque. This was kind of funny here because the whole time that this lady was speaking, I was like, I couldn't figure. I was like, who is she? I know this lady. And then Director Lebo goes, what's Noreen Bush's sister? And I'm like, oh, okay. Noreen's superintendent of Cedar Rapids. And yeah, there's spitting image. So what's going on here at this though, is this is a University of Dubuque's program to get people licensure. And Cedar Rapids, I'm particularly proud, is reimbursing their tuition if people do this. So we have 14 associates who are getting teaching licensure. And to me, that's one of the best places to recruit from because they've been in this and they know what they're walking into. And, and they're running toward it even more. So that's the type of resilience mindset we need to continue to cultivate and recruit. This was down in Central. Central's very cool. So it was the first place I got to go to live and that's Linda Stedham. And she invited me every, every semester I got to go down to Central. I learned about tulip time. I learned about Dutch letters and, and I really feel like I arrived as an Iowa. What's the big deal with tulips down here? They're like, are you kidding us? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But that's great. And, and now we're looking at taking a family trip down there next year to go check out tulip time and hang out down there. One of the cool things, just seeing, you know, how beautiful the state is when you get out and around. This was one of the cool things and something I've advocated for since I started teaching. When I first started teaching the language, it was very much four years in the university or bus, four years in the university or bus. And I was always opposed to that because I didn't become a teacher. So I was 30, I grew up in a house of labor. And, and not everybody wants to do that. And so this focus that I've seen grow across the state, the state, and promoting this was pretty awesome. At this skilled trades convention, there were over 5,000 students checking this out. And I just thought that was awesome. Because there's a lot of pathways. And Director Lebo working on the pump jack. She did well. She did well. Don't follow. I did not try. This was DMC Ankeny Campus. And this is some work I want to get involved in going forward in my own area. These are prospective high school students entering education as a field. And so that's one of the things I've been working on and kind of networking with, I'll speak to them. And then this, again, back to that trades, this was, uh, this was up in West Delaware. And one of the gentlemen who's cut off of this photo unfortunately is actually working as a welder now because he's certified through this program in high school, working for Paladin locally. I think he was making $18 an hour in high school. And, and no college debts. And they're covering his research, even the research he doesn't need for the job they're going to cover so that he gets his full development. And these types of opportunities are popping up everywhere. And in Cedar Rapids, one of the cool things that I was able to do is kind of connect a few people in the same rooms where Alliance has not done this in Cedar Rapids. We have this intro to energy program. We already have some students enrolled and, and they'll, they'll take the course and then they can apprentice with Alliance. And they'll make 15 or plus an hour in the summer working through that. In a city like Cedar Rapids that has as much manufacturing as we do, I just really think it's appropriate that school systems develop that workforce. And this Scott, do you guys know Scott? He's a past Teacher of the Year. I think he was 2016. He's retired now. He's down in St. Simon Island, Georgia. He's still willing to serve the state in any capacity. It just might be remote. And then this was where we were down in Bettendorf. And we saw, I believe it was 65 some students sign apprenticeship letters that day. And I just thought that was very cool. To me, this is like, seeing that come back around was letting all the students who weren't going to college know that they still have a value to this building. This was just the IACTE. I'm, I'm not going to lie. I was intimidated speaking there because what do you tell people who taught you how to be a teacher to do? Right? It worked out pretty well. I just tried to speak some greats. And then just more pictures of speaking with student teachers. And this was the last elementary visit and got, kind of got ambushed. No one told me I was going to be reading to students. And no one also told me how fun it's going to be. And that was very cool. And so there we go. I saw a picture with the handsomest guy in the room. I, I love this picture. I'm, I'm like cheesing for real there. I'm stupid giddy because the way these kids were interacting with the book and stuff. And I just, I just in my head, I was like, what's going to happen? Can I read high school histories to see if it's the same response? I don't think so. And then this sign now graces, it will grace my classroom in the fall. That was just very cool. And then this was another thing that is like kind of I've done is I've joined the Marine Corps League through this when they saw that I got that. And this was students in Grundy Center who had designed these tulips in, in this commemoration of World War I. And they dedicated this art monument. And I was asked to come up and be a part of it. And I got to meet some older established veterans. What was really cool is I believe the name was Rod, Randy, one of the gentlemen there. He actually came down to our Marine Corps Ball a couple of weeks later. I got to hang out with him again. And so it's not directly related to education, but being in this allowed me to connect with other veteran service organizations, which is pretty awesome. And then other roads that you drive in Iowa. I actually stopped for this picture because one time when my wife was, for a place for us to live, I said, I want a country lot. She came back with a wooded acreage. And I was like, no, this is what I meant by country lot. We weren't on the same page at all. And that was kind of like my coming around, right? Iowa rural roads to the interstate. And these are my next steps. I've been working on transition and mentoring with Sarah, the current 2022 Teacher of the Year. We've had a meeting where I formally turned over that Teacher of the Year organization to her. The EEA got set toward the Teacher of the Year was doing it in the year out of their service in the past somehow. And so since we were in a unique position with me having two years, we reset it to, to restore that. We established Green Hills AEA every year, asked the Teacher of the Year to lead a workshop. So it's always remote because it's such a huge AEA over such a widespread area. So what, what I did was talk to Michelle Katterston and see if there's a way that this can be a permanent incoming Teacher of the Year and outgoing Teacher of the Year work on this. So that there's a mentorship opportunity for the outgoing Teacher of the Year, an introduction to the incoming. They can try their message out a little bit, see what works. And it gives the coordinator, since Marietta, a chance to view us both and it gives feedback and some coaching before the Teacher of the Year takes over. I'll be an ongoing sounding board for Sarah. We talk regularly. I have emailed the applicants for the next selection and opened up for questions and called some of them and talked with them, the questions they had over the application and why they should apply. And then I'm creating a transition folder for documents for Sarah. Personal development, my biggest thing is I look outside of my classroom for partnerships. I've become, you know, I've done a lot of that locally and it's already kind of like, I thought I was going to slow down and settle down. But that's not really happening. I'm going to conferences next week, like on these boards and such. But that's okay. I've learned to embrace opportunities. I was the most reluctant Teacher of the Year ever. I, I was going to not do it, right? I did not want to leave my classroom. I was going to turn it down. I, and I just didn't want to do it. And then over the past 27 months, I've learned that there's a lot of good things that can come about embracing opportunity. It's the right mindset. And I've learned how to operate space organizationally, which was something that I did not necessarily, I mean, I was an organized classroom teacher, but it's kind of structured and set, right? But like sitting in your basement, teaching, doing these things, how do you operate? I figured that out. My future work, one, I'm going to continue working with the organization of education. We've got to change, we've got to make this name settle, Marietta. But this is the Teacher of the Year group. And so we have a few projects we've been looking at that the has some initiatives we might work for the EEA and continue to work with. Kennedy High School is the only high school in Cedar Rapids area that doesn't have an IJAG presence. So I've been talking with Carly Hopper about that, Harper about that. I've met with Professor McDermott at the University of Iowa and some folks at Kirkwood and Co. about a teacher academy for Cedar Rapids County School District, what that would entail. I just met with. New school district, what that would entail. I just met with Superintendent Bush last week about what needs to happen for that. I've become a member of the Board of Directors for the Academy. If you don't know about the Academy, it's worth a Google search, the Academy for Scholastic and Personal Success. Dr. Ruth White has been fighting the equity battle for over thirty years in Cedar Rapids. And this is a six week enrichment program over the summer for students of African descent. Uh it's an amazing program. I think ninety three percent of students who go through a matriculate secondary education, immediate attendance and grade improvements. They take a tour of a H B C U. Uh it's just a fantastic program that I've helped recruit students for for the last few years. But they've asked me to serve on the Board of Directors um going forward. And so I I look forward to having a larger footprint in there. And then um I serve as an organization that works with trying to recruit veterans into education. And I work with them at the University of Iowa. And I'm gonna continue to work with them as well and see what we can do to get best in education. This last, this is one of the last slides I have here. And this is what I shared with every student teaching group and presentation I had. I I noticed over the time of speaking with people that there was a. Lot of concern for what the future of the job looks like and things like that. And it took me back to the end of my boot camp. This is towards the end of boot camp. That's not me. That's not my drill instructor. This happened. Uh, I think it's like week twelve, where our last combat firing range, I'm pulling down targets. And uh series gunnery sergeant is talking to us and he's like Marines? And we're all like, oh, we call this Marines. Because if you're not, if you don't know, they call us recruits. We don't get to use our names in boot camp. You don't get to say I. Uh you have to refer yourself in the third. And so he said Marines, we're over the Persian Gulf. We did forty eight hours nonstop rotations, loading the line. You had to urinate, you did it on the line, you ate on the line, you slept on the line, you never left the line. And I was sitting there and I go, ooh. There's some good times too, though, right, Staff Sergeant? And he like knife hand snapped at me and he was like, yeah, those are the good times. You can't be proud of forty eight hours continuous ops, no rotation. What can you be proud of? And that hit me because that was like, this is what you're doing. That's the Marine Corps, right? Times are hard, outstanding. I can brag about hard times. You can't really brag about easy living, right? So what I shared with emerging educators and established veteran educators is that these these, you know. The hard times are the good times. You gotta lean into that. I don't remember a time when education's ever been an easy field. I don't remember ever hearing teachers collectively say, this is a fully funded best opportunity we've ever had. Right? I don't remember any of that. Um, and I led me down a little history route. So I looked what schools looked like nineteen twenty, Tennessee, the entrance evolution. Or the textbook wars in West, West Virginia in the seventies, or busing and integration. Our schools are crossroads of our communities. It's it's the only public institution that everybody walks through that doesn't involve prisoners, something like that. And and we we reflect all those things. And so if society is hectic and chaotic, schools and education will be too. And so I was just encouraging folks to lean into that challenge, to understand that's part of our manhood legacy of why we can be proud of the fact we call ourselves educators, because it's not easy. Not everybody can do it. And it's absolutely valuable for the continuation of our society. And then I just want to say thank you guys for this honor. It's been an honor to represent my chosen home state for two years. Uh everything I've learned will follow me back to my classroom. I look forward to my future work and partnerships. Um, I'm stepping down knowing that I was able to stabilize and keep this thing going through the shutdowns and responses when. You know, you're dealing with real world issues like pandemic and derachos. How do you keep going? Um, we've reset the E A, we've established transition practices for future Iowa toys. And I am leaving with full faith and confidence in our schools and teachers continuing to be inspiration and advocates for our students and community. So. It's been a pleasure, ladies and gentlemen on the board. Thank you very much. It's protocol now, Dave. Just get out of here. He was really good at directions too. Help me find the room. Well, that was because Carol's an amazing man. Yeah, there's one app. I didn't know how to drive here, but I saw it was behind building one, so I figured it was a walk home. We're gonna take a short extra ten and a break.